Welcome to the October 9th Board of Supervisors Business Meeting for Skookle Township. Tonight we have John Callahan, Danielle Jewen, Martha Majeski, myself, Mark Donovan, and from the supervisors, Valentina Minner is our Assistant Manager, Lori Gatz is our Township Manager, Bill Brennan is our Solicitor, and Paul Vattinger is our Engineer. Let's see, we had an executive session prior to this meeting, October 9th, and we'll start off our meeting with the presentation.
The purposes?
Oh, sorry, the purposes of the executive session were personnel purchase of property and litigation. Pass it to you.
Okay, so we have a very exciting presentation this evening. Karen Guerrero of our Environmental Advisory Council is here to present the winner of the 2024 Biggest Tree Competition.
So, yes, please stand with me here.
Sure.
Okay, so basically, the Biggest Tree Contest ended September 15th, and we had nine trees
that were nominated, and here we have our winner, American Sycamore tree with a diameter of five feet, 10 inches, so humongous and very well cared for over the decades. So, that's it, that's my presentation. So, thank you for the award.
What is your address?
She's not sharing.
Oh, you're not sharing?
Yes.
How about neighborhood?
Sure, Sunwood Farm, yes, yes. So, I have lived there since 1996, and I feel like I've been a steward of the tree. You know, I love that tree if I would interrupt the Phillies game to come and get my presentation. So, thank you, it really, people stop me all the time and just mention how they know my house by the tree, and they love the tree. The leaves now are about this big, and so my neighbor has many reasons to hate the tree, but she continues to say how much she enjoys it as well. So, thank you for this honor, and yeah, I hope people will come by and take a look.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Take a photo, yeah.
Would you like a photo?
A photo.
Charles. You're the EAC's secretary. Or the chair.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Thank you, this is going in the family album, you know.
I'm gonna hold it up in front of you?
Sure. Right, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll move right along to the regular business meeting consent agenda. I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes of the Board of Supervisors meeting from September 26, 2024 Business Meeting, and September 26, 2024 Public Hearing, including all departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of September 30, 2024. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I. Treasurer's report and payment of bills, I'll make a motion, we accept the treasurer's report for period ending September 30, 2024, second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
So, for period ending September 30, 2024, we have a general fund balance of just over $6.6 million. As far as where we are at budget-wise year-to-date, we have realized 100% of our revenues, and we are at just over 66% of our expenditures, so we are in good shape.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. I'll make a motion, we approve dispersments dated October 9, 2024, do I hear second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
All of the bills have been reviewed for the month and are recommended for payment.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
There are no subdivision land development items, old business, convenience store with gas ordinance. I'll make a motion that we authorize advertisement of the public hearing for November 13, 2024 at 7:00 PM for consideration of amendment to the convenience store with gas ordinance. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Thank you, discussion?
So, the Board will recall that the last time that this was on the agenda, we did table it because of discussion that was held as a result of some of the comments that were received from the county planning commission's review. So, there was some concern with whether or not we had covered ourselves in the language to not remove some protections that existing residential dwellings that are located outside of residential districts, that they might lose some of the protection from what we were trying to accomplish by increasing the distance between a residential district and the gas pumps. So, we made some revisions to the language, I think that the language now sufficiently addresses that concern, it's been reviewed by the Solicitor and the Engineer.
We had five options, actually six, we had six options, and this was the winner.
And the full text of the ordinance will be, it's not very long, so we will publish the entirety of the revision so that the public can see exactly what is being changed. And just for any interested parties, the, do you have the text in front of you?
It's under the old business.
So, the change that we are making currently, the convenience store with gas ordinance states that gas pumps cannot be, they must be at least 200 feet from a residential dwelling. The new language will read that gasoline pumps shall not be located within 200 feet of a school, place of worship, public recreation area, or residential zoning district regarding existing residential dwellings presently located in non-residential districts, no gasoline pump shall be located within 200 feet of the property line where the residential dwelling is located.
Now, the next step in this is we're gonna, the plan is to modify, the plan is to modify the ordinance for garages and gas stations to be consistent with this, so we're saying the same thing across the board.
We'll do that at a later date.
Do we believe this is, and I think this was addressed, but do we think this is sufficiently different where we need to take us to the Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission?
I don't.
Committee meeting, yeah?
Yeah, I don't.
All right, any other discussion? Motion's been made, second's been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to authorize advertisement of ordinance number 2024-04 Amendment to Chapter 370 regarding the location of gasoline pumps at convenience stores. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Thank you. This is the same thing, so, any other discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. All right, next item on the agenda, I'll make a motion, we authorize the Township Manager to sign the Alloy 5 AIA contract, do I hear second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes, so we have, we've tabled this item to make some revisions to this agreement in the past, so what I'm looking for at this point is just authorization to sign it with the revisions as we have discussed publicly previously. I don't have the final version back yet, we're still waiting on some response from the, you know, the lawyers and the insurance company have to give the final sign-off for the architects. So, the revisions will be made in accordance with the comments that we've discussed previously, but this just gives me the flexibility to sign it.
All right, any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. New business, discussion on police staffing.
So, the Chief is gonna come up and give an overview of upcoming plans that he has for some promotions in the department.
What I propose to the Board is after the untimely passing of Chief Frye, that put the department down one authorized officer less than where we're currently authorized to be at, my proposal would be to promote the Sergeant to Lieutenant, the Corporal to Sergeant, and to hold a process to select a new Corporal to fill that vacant position, and to promote, not promote really, but to make our current part-time officer full-time. So, that's, that basically is just the word I'm proposing.
All right, thank you. That'll cover us on that one, and we'll, I think we're looking to table, table the next few items, I'll let Lori speak on that.
Yes, so the Chief has made his proposal, and these promotions are items that will be handled by the Board. Tonight, we're going to, I'm recommending tabling, tabling the promotions just because we need a little bit more time to finalize the memorandums of understanding, the employment contracts, they're not contracts, they're called MOUs in the Police Department, but until we have sufficient time to work those out, we just didn't quite get them to the finish line before the meeting tonight. But we will, we have a second business meeting this month that was authorized to be re-advertised, so we will just table this if the Board agrees to the October 24 Business Meeting.
Do we have to make a motion to table it?
No.
No, tabling's just at my call, so, if there's no objections, we're gonna table those items.
To October 24.
To October 24. So, that puts us down to?
Number four.
Number four, there's two or twos.
Oh, my God.
Yes, we do.
So, just for, I know.
No matter how many times I read this agenda.
I know.
Always the auto numbering that gets us.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Township Manager to deposit the 2024 state aid into the Skookle Township Police Pension Plan in the amounts of $201,329.76 plus an additional employer contribution of $13,082.24 from the General Fund to satisfy the 2024 MMO. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Thank you, is there any discussion on this?
So, this is our minimum municipal obligation that we are required to put into the pension fund every year, this is an amount that's adopted in the budget. So, the state aid has been received for this year, the state aid did not satisfy the entirety of the MMO. I was expecting that, we knew projections when we adopted the budget last year, we knew that the projection was that our state aid was not going to meet our MMO obligation. So, I budgeted accordingly, and I was always planning that we would very likely need to deposit additional general funds into the pension fund. So, we're right on track with where I budgeted there. So, that will be made, and those checks are included in the dispersments that you are approving tonight. So, we received $201,000, so the entire amount of state aid that we received will go to the police pension plan, and then the, we'll get to the next item, but the, every additional dollar that goes in is coming from general funds.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to authorize the Township Manager to deposit an employer contribution of $76,348 from the General Fund into the non-uniform pension plan to satisfy the 2024 MMO. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Any?
So, same deal, this is, this is for the non-uniform pension plan, unfortunately, we did not receive enough state aid to cover any of our non-uniform MMO, so that is being entirely deposited from employer contribution general funds.
Lori, did we, did we budget this entire amount?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
There you are. I'll make a motion to authorize advertisement of pension ordinances, do I hear second?
I'll second.
So, this is, these are the revisions to the police pension ordinance that needs to be made to match the CBA that the Board voted on and approved back in August. So, this is, we're still working out the final language with the Pension Advisor, so I have a meeting with him on Friday of this week, actually, to finalize that. So, this is just authorizing the advertisement, and then it will be circulated and available for the public.
All right, nobody looks like they want to have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And this is a discussion and possible motion to advertise request for proposals for Township Solicitor.
So, our illustrious Solicitor has notified us that he is intending to take a step back at the end of the year from all of the amazing work that he does here at Skookle. He, I won't quote him, but you know, definitely is not because I call him too many times in a day, so, so what we're asking, what I'm asking for tonight is for authorization to advertise a request for proposal that we can seek a replacement. Bill's not going anywhere until the end of the year, so this would be an appointment for 2025. Unless I tape him to a chair or something.
I just want to say publicly, it's in my letter, but I do appreciate the 16 years that I've had here, it's been a wonderful time and the highlight of my legal career. It's not something I wanted to do, but I've been thinking about it for a long time, and at the end of the day, it's just time. So, I'm sure things will move on ahead without me, but I will miss you, and I'm not going anywhere yet, so I don't want to get too teary-eyed here, but I do appreciate everything you've done.
You have how many grandbabies?
I have five granddaughters, six and under, so I have to, you know, move in that direction.
Yes, you need a very large lap for five, for five middle ones.
Well, if you're ever looking for a fun outing, we have these meetings every month.
Bring them in.
But it has been a pleasure having you as our Solicitor for my entire time here, thank you, thank you for serving faithfully and always with great professionalism. It has been fantastic working with you, so, thank you.
I'll second that.
Yeah. So, we will regretfully make the motion to advertise for a request for proposals for Township Solicitor, I'll look for a second.
I'll very hesitantly second that.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And I'll just reiterate on that topic, again, the bill is here through the end of the year, and we have some malingering outstanding items, too, that he'll help us transition with, so, he's not going anywhere yet, we're not gonna let him. And also, the, the motion to authorize the advertisement for the RFP doesn't tie the Board to anything at this point, it just allows staff to start working on planning for what the next step is gonna be.
Should they decide to?
Should they decide to.
And Bill, just a reminder, we do know where you live.
It's true.
Yeah.
And I have, don't change your number.
Please do not, yeah. All righty, well, we'll move on to, with our two-minute reports, Board Liaison, starting with John.
So, the big thing from the EAC is that the regional organization, or the original organization that they were gonna get our trees from, saplings from for the tree giveaway event, wasn't able to fulfill, so ended up buying the remainder from the organization they used last year. So, as far as the public and everyone else is concerned, there's really no change in anything other than having to shift the dates. I don't know if the date has been solidified yet, but the tentative one is November 2nd, it is locked in, okay, cool. So, then November 2nd now is the current date for that. That was, that was, that's it?
How tall, how big are the trees? And what kind of trees do we get?
What kind of trees, I don't know.
Oh, there's a whole list.
Yeah, there's.
No, I know, I saw it.
Believe it or not, I am not a plant person, so I don't have the species memorized.
Varying sizes.
Yeah, varying sizes, so the.
And where can they find that list?
That will be up on the, it'll be up on the Facebook site, and then on pickup, too, I think they're still doing the QR codes as opposed to doing handouts, so there'll be tree care information for that, so depending on what tree you get, what kind of requirements it has, sunlight, watering, et cetera, et cetera. And, oh, size, so the subset of them, the smaller amount, will be just small, tiny little saplings that are about two inches tall, that was the original set we were supposed to get, they're also be very tiny. The remainder are larger, I wanna say about a foot tall, so like true saplings, and again, variety of breeds, first come, first served, so if you have something on your mind, show up. I don't think we got any pawpaws, and apparently that's the hot commodity in the area, so, if you want one, get in early.
Yeah.
I think that's show ID, yes.
Oh, yeah, they did decide on that, okay, yep.
Showing ID, yeah. All right, Danielle?
So, at the PRPC this, last week, no, the week before, we had a presentation by the Skookle River Passenger Rail Authority, thought that was particularly interesting, and I actually have been intending to send you the presentation, Lori, in case we wanted to link it on the website. It really was a fascinating presentation, of course, I, like many people, have been aware of the efforts to bring passenger rail back to the area and to Redding, and I truly did walk away from the presentation feeling like it was a, more likely than not that we'll, that we will see that in my lifetime. So, we, at the end of the presentation, we asked, what could we do as, you know, local governments to support? So, we're, we've asked Ed Dirkoff to draft a letter of support from the PRPC, and I'll be, will be engaging with them in other opportunities. He said honestly, having local governments express to state legislature the fact that this will be a benefit, even if it's not physically located, the station isn't physically located in our municipality, is of great value. The intention is that this will be taken over by Amtrak, and will be run by Amtrak, similar to the Keystone Line, and the three stations are gonna be the Phoenixville and the Pottstown, and then the Redding Station, so a little bit of a different model than SEPTA, but it was very interesting, so I will share that with you.
That'd be great.
Cool. Martha, nothing for Martha, nothing for me.
We do have that on our announcements.
Yeah.
I thought you were recycling that.
What?
Recycling.
Oh, you wanted to announce that? We didn't have a flyer or anything for it.
Okay, we'll wait, we can do it.
All right, I'll make that announcement.
There you go.
Okay, we are going to be doing a textile recycling event, I have to pull my calendar up here.
Is it November 16? Is it November?
Yes, it's November 16, it'll be at Manavon Elementary from?
Eight to one.
Eight to one, and we have partnered with Helpsey, and they are a for-profit company that takes all of your textiles and either resells them as is, or downcycles them to something else. And they, they take a whole list of everything, and we're gonna have a flyer shortly, so look for it on our website, on our Facebook page, and everything.
Is that a, is that a school day?
No, it's a Saturday.
Oh, it's a Saturday, okay.
Yeah.
Yes. I hope it's not.
No, it's a Saturday.
Hopefully.
And if you don't have any textiles to recycle, I will be there, so you could just come and say hi to me.
I guess, been talking budget with our fire, fire, local fire company, so that's been, that's been a very long conversation, so we'll keep, we'll keep it up. Yeah, so, we'll pass it right to Lori.
So, I have been working primarily on our upcoming bond issuance for the open space transaction that we've been discussing. We had our rating call earlier this week, I think it went, I think it went very well, we are, we're expected to have our, receive our bond rating by the end of next week already. So, we are right on target, I mean, this is moving very fast as it has to, but we're right on target, we're meeting all of our deadlines, things are going well, no issues so far, and yeah, so we'll continue working on that. I had several due diligence calls this week for the bond, for the rating process, so we're moving along.
All right, Chief of Police, any two-minute reports?
I apologize, I didn't get the monthly report to you, I was up at Inny Town Gap over the past week, so I didn't get a chance to do that, I will get it to you tomorrow. The only other thing I just wanted to advise, well, we've had a couple investigations that have consumed a considerable amount of time of the officers, several officers' time, it won't show up in that report, but there has been a lot of work done in the last couple weeks, I just wanted to advise you all of that, so.
Is everything okay?
Yeah, we're good. I just, sometimes things don't show up as a number, but there's a lot of time invested in the investigation part of it.
So, I brought this up, I don't know, maybe two months ago, I think it was brought up at the PRPC meeting that I attended in your stay, we talked about a, the bridge that goes over Rapsdam Road, how they were able to put up barriers on either side of that, and they said that their Chief of Police was very instrumental in getting those barriers put up, and a lot of people are like, well, why aren't we doing that for Paulings Road? And I'm just putting it out there, they were successful, and it's up.
Well, there'd be, did you want to say something, Lori? Okay, there would be a cost, a significant cost involved, so that would have to be budgeted for. I did actually, just by chance, drop my son off at the train station down in Radnor, and they used something, a little bit, a different model?
Yeah, seen that one.
Which is just hanging PVC, so that if a vehicle would touch it, they would hear something, but it wouldn't do any damage. What they're doing over there, I think the Township would have liability if we ran into a steel girder that we put in front of a bridge.
Okay.
It's an immovable steel girder.
And it's a state road, it's a state road.
I was gonna ask you, isn't there a distinction because that's a township road?
No, Rapsdam is a state road.
Rapsdam is also a state road.
It is.
So, Rapsdam is a state road, the bar's cost about $110,000 for, for the steel, because the steel costs are through the roof right now, and the reason that they did that is because it was inhibiting traffic on a regular basis, like, like every other week, so the Board of Supervisors in East Pikeleen decided to spend that 110 because the state would not chip in a dime on their state road, and the county, well, county didn't chip in either, so.
Wasn't there, there's a historic covered bridge there, too, right?
That's the historic covered bridge, too.
So, that's another factor.
That's a further aggravating factor.
And we have yet to have any damage to the bridge, we have a lot of damage to trucks, but not.
Yeah, the difference is.
And that's a Norfolk Southern Bridge, and not a historic covered bridge.
I mean, we, we.
The difference is.
Lori and I did discuss researching the cost involved in doing something similar to Radnor did, but it will be substantial cost because you'll have to put up, it wouldn't be steel, it would be the aluminum, almost like a traffic light standard, it would come off on the side of the road, and then the PVC hangs from that, but those, those standards are not cheap.
Yeah, and the other reason is the, when the bridge goes out over there, it's for months instead of hours, so that's, that's the other big reason of putting it in there, so, that's, that would be the answer for the question that people are asking.
I just know that you guys are always there, and you guys get a lot of grief, and I just thought it would be something that might be useful.
Trust me, we would like to fix it, too, but there are some hurdles to get through before we can do that.
Okay, cool, so, good, it's being discussed, that's all I care about, so, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Go down to Paul.
All right, thank you, just three brief items, number one, the survey plan of the municipal. Number one, the survey plan of the municipal complex should be completed in the next couple days, once it's received, I'll pass it on to Lori and Valentina, and we can take it to ALLOY 5. Additionally, the MS4 permit renew, or, excuse me, annual report was submitted the end of September as it's required, we haven't gotten any feedback yet, so if there's any, any response, we'll let you know. And finally, the PRP plan, I drove past today, Oakwood Lane, which is the infiltration trench, the underground trench with a little bit of a swell, and then Davis Road, the adjoining road, had the swell and the rock, check dams, they've been installed, there was no active construction today, so I don't know if maybe they had their labor somewhere else, but it's, if you drive past it, you'll see what it looks like right now, so, and I confirmed with Bill that they have been, have been taking a lot of pictures, which is going to be required for our report, for submission before the end of the year.
Thanks. Additional business, discussion on agenda items for upcoming workshop meetings, I'll pass it to Lori real quick.
That's, our next workshop meeting is our budget meeting, so we will be handling that as well as the promotions for the police department that we tabled from tonight, and that will be, that's our last workshop for the rest of the year unless we schedule a special meeting. So, any, any future topics, we'll plan for 2025.
Thanks. Any other discussion on that one? I assume not. Okay. There are a few announcements, and bear with me, they are not written in my voice, so we'll see how well I do.
I made them interactive.
I can, I can see that, yeah. I can tell who wrote it, yes.
I'll, I'll change that next time.
No, it's fine, I don't care. So, we are, we're having a township movie night, join us for a family-friendly outdoor Halloween movie night at Skookel Township's Municipal Building. We are at 111 Valley Park Road in Phoenixville on Friday, October 18th. We'll be screening The Addams Family 2, starting at 7:00 PM. Kids come dressed in your best costumes for a chance to win our best costume contest. Free popcorn, candy, and drinks will be available, and don't forget to bring your chair or blanket. Skookel Police Association food drive started, Skookel Township Police Association is hosting their annual food drive for our local community. From October 1st through October 31st, please consider donating food and supplies to support our residents in need. All donations will be collected at the Skookel Township Municipal Building, again, at 111 Valley Park Road, or donations can be shipped to the township building using Walmart or Amazon, or any other shipping retailer. Thank you in advance for your kindness and generosity.
I do have a question, because I received the announcement on the food drive, the, it can be dropped off anytime, and then there's this, an additional special event?
Correct.
That is occurring, so anytime during normal business hours at the township, it can be dropped off?
Yep.
And then there's this additional?
Fun drop-off day.
Fun drop-off day, okay.
Is that, are they doing that the same day as the tree?
No. It was originally planned that, but the EAC pushed the date, so, no.
Okay, what date is that for the food drive?
October 26. I think October 26. Let me see, I lost, yes.
October 26.
From what, the what?
Check our website for that.
Please, please check our website for details.
Refer to the website, please.
Do you not get some township emails?
Yeah. All righty.
I didn't get one about the food drive.
No, you didn't? Maybe I can adjust.
We've got a couple more announcements, the EAC native tree giveaway, John already touched on it, the EAC is hosting a tree giveaway event to provide 165 free native trees to Skookel Township residents. The tree giveaway will be held at the Skookel Township Municipal Building parking lot on Saturday, November 2nd, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. To be eligible for the giveaway, residents must provide proof of address upon pickup. And finally, Light the Night, join the Domestic Violence Center of Chester County for their annual Light the Night for Hope and Healing event for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The tree lighting will occur tomorrow, Thursday, October 10th, at the Skookel Township Municipal Building, beginning at 6:45 PM. That runs me through the announcements, thank you. Let's see, are there any updates from our local fire company?
Your only fire company.
Yeah, the only one that serves us.
There we go.
There we go.
Our favorite, too.
Absolutely. Expect nothing less. Happy Fire Prevention Week, a reminder to double-check that your smoke detectors are working in your house, change your clocks, change your batteries, we're coming up on that. This Saturday is our lasagna sale, we're already sold out, good luck, wait till next year.
Yay!
November, next Monday, excuse me, this coming Monday is our open house, come on out, there's plenty of stuff for adults and kids alike. November 2nd is our pancake breakfast, that's a good time, and then, on behalf of the company and the 75th Committee, we wanted to present the board with, thank you for what you guys do for us, you can level a table with it, or a chair, maybe you'd like to hang it in the lobby, it might look a little better out there, but thank you from us, so.
Thank you.
Put it in camera, put it to the camera.
Got to get my good side. And that's it, you have our report, any questions? Let us know, we're open books, or try to be, anyway, so.
Doing a good job of it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That looks great, I like the uniforms.
We collect every once in a while.
Yeah, it's looking good.
Very nice.
All righty, so any public comment? All right, then I'll make a motion that we adjourn. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, have a good night, everybody.